Good evening, the time is now 7:04 and I would like to call the City Council meeting to order at this time. Can we start with a roll call, please?
Roll call shows all seven city councilors are present.
The next item is Pledge of Allegiance, will we all please stand?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is Special Order of the Day and Announcements. Tonight, we have a proclamation declaring Tuesday, August 3rd as National Night Out. Vice President Van de Bogart will be making a presentation to Chief Jacob.
Yes, an official proclamation of the city of Beloit. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch is sponsoring a unique nationwide crime, drug, and violence prevention program on August 3rd, 2010, entitled National Night Out. And whereas the 27th Annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for the city of Beloit to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police, community, crime prevention efforts. And whereas the Beloit Police Department, Beloit Crime Stoppers, and Neighborhood Housing Services play a vital role in assisting our community through joint crime and drug and violence prevention efforts in Beloit, Wisconsin, and are supporting the National Night Out 2010 locally. And whereas it is essential that all citizens of Beloit be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact that their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in Beloit. And whereas police-community partnerships, neighborhood safety, awareness, and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program. Now therefore, the City Council President of the city of Beloit does hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 3rd, 2010, as National Night Out in Beloit and encourages residents to acknowledge the event with their neighbors by hosting block parties, cookouts, youth programs, and other such activities that strengthen and promote neighborhood spirit and police-community partnerships. Presented this 19th day of July, 2010, Kevin D. Levy, President, Beloit City Council.
Bob and Norm?
Thank you. Very good.
I'd like to thank the council for recognizing this great activity in the community and know its importance to everyone in Beloit. Bob Flugel, our Crime Stopper Coordinator and coordinator of this event is here just to give you a brief overview of the activities that night.
Hi. We're a little short on numbers this year. Hopefully, we get more block parties coming in. The deadline's this Friday at 5 o'clock. Beloit is unique still compared to Janesville and South Beloit. Our block parties, you know, consist of the neighborhoods where they get to know everybody on their block. That way, that helps deter crime. They know that, you know, Joe Smo lives at this address and, you know, that car doesn't look familiar. Whereas, you know, the events in South Beloit and Janesville, they're a good thing, but, you know, you don't get to know your neighbors. So, I encourage everybody to sign up and beat the deadline by 5 o'clock this Friday. We're going to be kicking off this year at Our Savior's Lutheran Church at 749 Bluff Street. And I'll be getting the information to all the city council members, the fire department, and also the police department to start off there at 5:30 on August 3rd. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public hearings. Item 4A, please.
Item 4A is a resolution authorizing a conditional use permit to allow an overhead door to face Milwaukee Road and a drive-in use in the C-3 MRO, Community Commercial Milwaukee Road Overlay District, for the property located at 2748 Milwaukee Road, Sponge Spa. There was a Plan Commission recommendation for approval, 6-0.
Staff presentation, please.
Tony Ruiz, the owner of Sponge Spa Car Wash, which is located at 2748 Milwaukee Road, is intending to demolish the existing car wash structure, which has two overhead doors and a small retail space, and reconstruct a new single bay car wash with one overhead door. A conditional use permit is required for large work areas. Garage doors are open bays facing Milwaukee Road in the Milwaukee Road Overlay District and drive-in uses in all commercial and industrial districts. The applicant did submit a preliminary elevation, which was included in your packet, which shows a proposed overhead door and pedestrian door which will face Milwaukee Road. Both doors will be glass and the building itself will be constructed of brick with dark banding, which is shown on the middle elevation, on that elevation drawing. The car wash is proposed to be 3,538 square feet in area and feature one bay. Vehicular traffic will move from the joint access from the Milwaukee Road, Frontage Road, south to the back of the property, continue through the car wash, and exit from the north side of the building back onto the frontage road. The plan features adequate stacking spaces for the drive-in use. Four stacking spaces are required. Nine are actually shown on the site plan. And the plan also features additional green space on the south side of the property, a new landscape island along the west property line, and additional parking spaces. It is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, which indicates that this property is appropriate for community commercial uses. Plan Commission held a public hearing at their last meeting. No residents attended. And following review of the application, recommended approval, subject to the six conditions which are listed in the resolution, which are that this conditional use permit authorizes a single overhead door to face Milwaukee Road and a drive-in use on the property located at 2748 Milwaukee Road. At least 200 additional landscaping units, consisting of evergreen shrubs between 2 and 5 feet in height, must be included on the landscape plan. These shrubs must be located between the Milwaukee Road, Frontage Road right-of-way and the front of the building. The applicant must apply for site plan review and architectural review and obtain a certificate of zoning compliance and architectural review certificate prior to any proposed improvements to the building or property. The applicant must obtain all the proper building permits prior to demolition of the existing building and construction of the new building. And the applicant and property owner must meet all other requirements of the City of Beloit Municipal Code and then our standard condition about major changes coming back through this public process and minor changes being approved administratively. And Plan Commission recommended approval, 6-0.
Thank you. I will now open the public hearing for item 4A. Is there anyone who would like to speak on item 4A? Please come forward, state your name. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on item 4A? Third and final call, anyone here wishing to speak on item 4A? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion, please. There's a motion by Counselor Johns, second by Counselor Dent. Any counsel discussion or questions? Counselor DeForest?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to ask Ms. Kershawson, since the original condition of having a wall, a visual wall in place has been removed and you have the landscaping units. I just want to be clear, those will be placed on the Milwaukee-facing side.
It's between the Milwaukee Road, Frontage Road, and the front of the building, which is condition number two.
All right. And you feel that's sufficient to help buffer the building from Milwaukee Road?
Yes. When the wall was required, there were two bays. This has got a much smaller impact on the road itself.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? There's a, it's been motion and second. Are those in favor of approving this signified by saying aye? Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, a motion passes 6-7-0. Item 4B, please.
4B is a proposed ordinance amending the zoning district map for property located at 1420 Madison Road from R1A Single Family Residential District to C2 Neighborhood Commercial District. There is a request for a first reading to suspend the rules for a second reading and Plan Commission recommended approval, 6-0.
Thank you, staff presentation, please.
Thomas Roell, I hope I said that right, has applied for rezoning from R1A Single Family Residential District to C2 Neighborhood Commercial District for the property located at 1420 Madison Road. This is a single-family residence that's currently located on the property. The applicant has filed an application to extend an outdoor seating area for the Mouse Tavern onto this property. That will be reviewed at a later meeting. If the rezoning is approved, he will need to obtain the conditional use permit before utilizing the outdoor seating area. And if it is approved, staff will be recommending one or more conditions dealing with the coexistence of a single-family dwelling in the outdoor seating area. The rezoning itself is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, which recommends neighborhood commercial uses and a zoning district classification of C2 Neighborhood Commercial District for the property. And this is the house that's located immediately adjacent to the Mouse Tavern. And Plan Commission held a public hearing and did unanimously recommend approval of the request.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to open up the public hearing for item 4B. Is there anyone who would like to speak on item 4B? Anyone wishing to speak on item 4B? Third and final call, is there anyone wishing to speak on item 4B this evening? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and I would ask a motion to suspend the rules.
I'd so move, Mr. President.
Motion by Van de Bogart, is there a second? Second by Johns, all in favor of suspending the rules, signify by saying aye? Passes 7-0. Motion on the merits?
Move approval on the merits, Mr. President.
Motion by Van de Bogart, second by DeForest. Counselor, discussion? Seeing no questions, comments, or discussion, all those in favors signify by saying aye? Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes 7-0. Item number five, citizens' participation. This is the type of time on the agenda where citizens may come forward to speak. We would ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. We will not cut you off, however, we ask you to be respectful of the time. We ask you not to do any personal attacks on counselors or staff. So, the first one that we have to speak this evening, and I apologize if I mispronounced the name, but Mr. Samra? If you could come down and state your name.
Name, Harjinder Samra. Owner of Beloit Mobile, 1902 Chopira Road. Been there five years, running my business. Currently holding a beer license and wishing to apply for a Class A liquor license.
I'm Amy Roth, 821 and 1/2 Broad Street. I'm the manager at the Beloit Mobile, I've been there two years.
The reason I'm applying for a Class A license is due to the tobacco. Illinois is pretty cheaper now for a year and we're pretty getting hurt on the tobacco business and overall sales.
We've always been really cooperative with the police department and what any requests they've ever had with us, we've always been willing to help them out if they help us out kind of thing. There was a lot of unnecessary traffic a few years ago. And during that time, they had asked us to close down the store in between 2:00 and 3:00 a.m. on Thursdays, Fridays, and Saturdays. That way, like, the unnecessary bar crowd could get home and stuff. That way, there wouldn't be all that traffic just sitting in the parking lot and whatnot. That way, there wouldn't be anything going on. When we were here on, last week, on Tuesday, a lot of the disapprovals came from the fact that they kept bringing up the zoning area of the Sitco that is straight across the street from us. And they kept bringing up the church that's Kitty Corner, that sits on Bayless, saying that we're too close to the church to have the liquor license. And the Sitco had applied for the liquor license and they were rejected. And it wouldn't be fair if we got approved because they were rejected. But the reason that they were rejected was because of the fact that they've had many violations. They've had their beer license pulled a few times and whatnot. And we haven't had any citations in three years. No ticketings, no nothing. And Walgreens, which is closer to the church than we are, just got approved for their Class A liquor and beer license. So, that's going to cause even more, like...
This is going to take business away, beer business away from us.
Okay, thank you. The next one that would like to speak is Mr. Sandridge.
He left.
He left?
He was the architect for Sponge Spa.
Okay. I close it to citizens. Anyone else would like to speak at this time on citizens' participation? Seeing none, we'll move to item 6, excuse me, which is Consent Agenda. All items listed on the Consent Agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council members will request, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point on the agenda. Is there any counselor who would like anything removed from the Consent Agenda? Counselor DeForest?
I believe that B and C, I would like both to remove from the Consent Agenda, please.
Items B and C? Any other counselor like anything removed at this time? Seeing none, the Consent Agenda will consist of items A and D through H. Is there a motion for approval? Motion by Dent, second by Johns, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes 7-0. Oh, okay, I'm sorry, one upstretion. 4-2-1. Thanks, Counselor Neil. Item 6B.
Okay, item 6B is a resolution approving a renewal Class A beer and Class A liquor license for Sembie Incorporated, doing business as BP Gas Station, 2933 Milwaukee Road, Kristin Lower Agent. There was an Alcohol Beverage Committee recommendation for approval, 4 to 2.
Is there any specific questions at this time, Counselor DeForest? Okay. Seeing no questions or comments, is there a motion for approval?
I would move to approve 6B.
Is there a second? Motion by Dent, a second by Johns. Counselor, discussion? Counselor Van de Bogart?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would note that this is a, excuse me, this is a renewal of an existing Class A license. And it's not a new Class A license.
Okay, thank you. It's been motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes 7-0. Item 6C, please.
Okay, item 6C is a resolution approving Class A liquor license for Samra and Singh Incorporated, doing business as Beloit Mobile, 1902 Chopira Road, Harjinder Samra Agent. The applicant currently holds a beer license and is requesting to add alcohol. The Alcohol Beverage Committee recommendation for approval failed, 2, 3, 1.
Thank you. Is there any counsel questions on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would it be appropriate to, since they recommended denial, would it be okay to put it in a motion?
The resolution is written in the affirmative, so I believe the motion should be in the affirmative and then the vote would be taken. Is that what you're asking?
Sure. I want to make sure that I worded right correctly. Okay, so is there a motion? I want to get the right one here. So, in a sense, we'll be making a motion to...
Approve.
Approve.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
President, I would move to approve 6C.
There's been a motion to approve item 6C, is there a second?
I would second that.
Been motion by Dent, second by Van de Bogart, to approve item 6C. Any counsel discussion? Counselor Van de Bogart?
I would note that this is a new application, it's not a renewal. And I do have a question and a concern with the location.
Thank you. You have a specific question you want to ask anybody?
No, no, I just make a general comment.
Thank you. Counselor DeForest?
I also would like to note, this is a new request and although we continue to have discussions as a body, I continue to express my concerns about additional new licenses. And I am also not comfortable with the location.
Okay, thank you. Any other counsel comments or concerns? Counselor Johns, did you have anything? Okay. There's been motion and second that item 6C is approved. All those in favor of approving item 6C signify by saying aye? All those oppose? Nay. Fails. Item 6C fails with a 1 to 6.
1-6.
1-6. Item 7 is ordinances, item 7A, please.
Item 7A is a proposed ordinance to establish parking time regulations on Broad Street. There is a request for a first reading and suspend the rules for second reading. Traffic Review Committee recommended approval, 7-0.
Thank you. Is there a motion to suspend the rules for item 7A? Staff presentation, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I'm sorry, Mike.
I think that's pretty good. Staff presentation for this one. The signs were installed on Broad Street on the north side when that area was used as the transfer center for the buses. The bus transfer center is now open and it's no longer needed to be used for that purpose. So, it's been requested to replace the parking back on the north side, with the exception of two locations. The east end and the very west end on the north side between State and Pleasant Street. So, you have an attached map that shows you where the parking will remain restricted. And the Traffic Review reviewed this, committee reviewed this, and approved it 7-0. And it's recommended to approve this resolution.
Thank you. Now, is there a motion to suspend the rules? Motion by Johns, is there a second? Second by Haynes. All those in favor of suspending the rules, say aye? Aye. Any opposed? Passes 7-0. Now to the merits, is there a motion?
I would move that we approve 7A.
Motion by Dent, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Haynes. All those, Counselor, discussion? Counselor DeForest?
I do have a question. It's hard to tell from the picture here, how many parking spots will actually be opened up? Because it looks like quite a bit is still being retained as no parking. It looks like four, four spots, or... Okay. And the reason why we're still retaining the far ends of each of the street is why?
The east end is for an additional bus stop. So, we needed to have that space to allow the buses to stop there, to drop off and pick up people in the downtown area. And the west end is to allow for the right turn lane.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Counselor Van de Bogart?
Ms. Fleisch, on the west end one, essentially, that's what exists already, is that correct?
Correct, we're just updating the ordinance.
The right turn lane exists already, so we're not changing anything.
We're not changing it, we're just making sure that we don't release the parking.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any other counsel discussion or questions? Seeing none, there's been a motion and a second. All those in favors, say aye? Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes 7-0. Item 7B, please.
Item 7B is a proposed ordinance to designate one-way traffic for Chapin Street and College Street and to designate terrace parking on College Street. There is a request for a first reading and suspend rules for second reading. Traffic Review Committee recommended approval, 7-0.
Thank you, staff presentation, please.
Thank you. The request was made by the engineering firm of R.H. Baderman on behalf of the Beloit College. The entire request included the one-way street designation... knew packets. The request to add the terrace parking along Chapin was withdrawn by the college during the traffic review committee meeting. The neighbors did not support the addition of the terrace parking in Chapin for the aesthetic reasons. As we said, the Traffic Review met on this on June 28th and voted seven zero in favor of designating Chapin and college as one-way streets and terrace parking along the east side of College Street only. They did not act on the terrace parking on Chapin. Landscaping will be included as part of the installation of the angle parking in the east terrace along College Street. The college held two, two public information meetings on their campus for this area. The first one was on March 23rd and the second on June 11th. And the second meeting included a questionnaire for the affected property owners. The results of the questionnaire were nine of nine affected properties were in favor of the proposed improvements to Chapin Street and College Street. Beloit College does own all but one of those nine properties. It is the recommendation of the Engineering Division to approve the one-way designations and parking on both sides in the terrace on, on College Street.
Thank you. Is there a motion to suspend the rules? Motion by Johns, a second by Dentch. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passes seven zero.
Move approval on the merits, Mr. President.
Motion by Vanda Bogart, is there a second? Second by Haynes. Counselor discussion? Counselor DeForest, did you? You did?
Yes, I did. Thank you. I do want to publicly thank Beloit College for taking such great efforts to receive input from the neighborhood and then also to withdraw their request for parking along Chapin Street. I just wanted to make sure, since I wasn't present either of these meetings or saw minutes of them, were there any other concerns the neighbors brought up related to, to this, this change?
I only attended the one of the Traffic Review personally, and they were addressed in the meeting. And their biggest concern was that on Chapin, they'd had no others that...
They didn't have any other concerns that you brought up.
...brought forward.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Any other counsel questions or comments?
Yes, I can. So I was going to look to see if there was enough width since it's going to be one-way to where you're going to be parking on both sides of the street, parallel parking. Did you get that study?
We're looking into that and we're working with the college to see if that's something they would consider wanting. And they haven't responded yet. Thanks.
Any other counselor comments, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes seven zero. Item seven C, please.
Item seven C is a proposed ordinance to repeal and recreate section 9.26.7 of the Code of General Ordinances of the City of Beloit relating to electrical requirements for pools. There is a request for a first reading to suspend the rules for second reading.
Staff presentation, please.
The current ordinance requires a 15-foot setback from underground electrical service. And this actually is not consistent with state or national code. And Alliant Energy has brought it to our attention that it has been problematic as they've been changing out some electrical services. So they made the request. Our electrical inspector supported it, so we're bringing this forward to you tonight. Essentially, what this ordinance does is it makes our code consistent with state and national codes instead of putting an explicit standard in there. And staff has reviewed it and, and Alliant Energy is supportive of it as well.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
Who to suspend the rules?
Motion by Haynes, is there a second? Second by Dentch. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes seven zero. Now to the merits.
Move approval.
Motion by Haynes, second by DeForest. Any counsel comments or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes seven zero. Item eight, appointments, there are none. Item nine, counselor activities and upcoming events. Counselor Haynes, we'll start with you.
I have nothing this morning.
Counselor Johns.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to take a moment to thank every single person in this community that made it possible. We have 15 theater students that are leaving for Scotland in two weeks. Total cost of the trip was $87,000. And through small businesses and families and fellow counselors and city staff that I've heckled and begged and borrowed and, no stealing, we raised the 87,000. And the kids leave in, in two weeks for 12 glorious days in London and Edinburgh, Scotland, and they get to tour and perform for a chance of a lifetime. They will be performing a Master of Two Servants, January, or January, oh my gosh, it was hot today, July 31st and August 1st. One performance in Janesville and one in Beloit. And I will have those locations down the road. But I just wanted to make sure everyone knew we made it and to thank everyone, so, thanks.
Counselor Neil. Counselor DeForest.
Yes, thank you. I would like to thank those organizations and individuals who worked so hard to bring back the commemoration of Juneteenth, such a very important historic day to commemorate and was able to attend that. I saw President Levy there and also Chief Jacob Sayer, and I appreciated their presence. I don't know if I missed anyone. But great food, great people, great time, and just very excited to see again that brought back to our community. So kudos to those individuals and hope that it continues into the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Dentch.
I have nothing.
Counselor Vanda Bogart.
Congratulations and thank you to those who participated in and supported Riverfest a week or two ago. And let's get out and participate in Night Out on Tuesday, the 3rd of August.
Okay, thank you. And I have nothing this evening as well. Item 10 is the City Manager's Presentation, Presentation of 2009 Audit Report. And it'd be by Mr. York.
You've got a crowd here this evening, I believe. Thank you, Mr. President. It's my pleasure to introduce a gentleman from Baker Tilly, Virchow Kraus, Mr. Tom Scheidiger. He's a partner with the firm. And Joe Lightcap, Joe was the manager in charge of the city's audit this year. And they're here to, I think, give you some good news. I think if you've had an opportunity to look over some of the materials we sent out last week, as well as the, the CAFR itself, which is on the city's website, that you'll certainly note that even in light of these difficult economic times that is being suffered, not only in Beloit but throughout the country, we did finish our 2009 year in actually fairly good financial condition. We had a little bit of an increase in our fund balance in our general fund last year, which I thought was exceptionally good news, again, considering the economy. Joe and, and Tom are here really to go through all the details of the report. They have quite a comprehensive presentation that they'll be making. And I'll go ahead and turn this over to them at this point and, and let them have some fun with you guys, so.
Thank you, Paul. Like Paul said, my name is Tom Scheidiger and I'm a partner in charge of the single audit portion of the city's audit. And, and Joe is the manager in charge of the financial part of the audit. And what we're going to go through tonight are the highlights for the city's audit for 2009. And as we're going through the presentation, if you have any questions, feel free to ask them at any time. And between us and Paul, we hopefully can answer all of those. So I'll turn it over to Joe.
Thank you, Tom. Thanks for having us. The, there's three main reports that will be going, or presentations will be going over tonight. The first being what's up on the screen, the report to the city council. Next, I'll go briefly into the CAFR. It's quite a large document with a lot of good information in it. We would get lost in the details and be here way too long tonight to go over all of it. But, you know, as Tom said, if there are any questions, we'll answer them or, you know, we can come back or, you know, we'll meet with you, whatever's convenient, to discuss any of the details. And the third will be the, the report on internal controls for this year. So we'll start with the report to the city council. All right. This first slide shows the financial statement highlights for the general fund at the top part. And we see that for fiscal year 2009, the general fund ended the year with fund balance a just over, well, 10 and a half million, around 10 and a half million. And almost 8 million of that was undesignated fund balance for, for use as the city sees fit. If, one of the important ratios that we look at is how that fund balance, that undesignated fund balance compares to next year's operating budget for the general fund. And you can see that that percentage is 26.91%. It's an increase from last year. And I believe city council's policy is 25%, so this is in excess of that policy. This is a good number and it, well, what the fund balance will be is, it'll be reserves for working capital for 2010 that you're using now. As, as you know, the city receives around 60% of its funding from intergovernmental sources and the bulk of that being state shared revenues, which doesn't come in until the end of November. So this, this fund balance will, will help, will hold you over, should, with, you know, with the management's decisions that have been in the past, this would continue to, to hold true and be enough fund balance for, until the state shared revenues come through. Most clients tend to shoot for 15 to 20%. The normal in Wisconsin is between 10 and 30%. Some are higher, some are lower, depending on, on management policies. The next section in this slide shows outstanding general obligation debt compared to the debt capacity. And then that ratio for 2009 were at just under 70%. This is a little bit high compared to the normal in Wisconsin, which is 40 to 50%, but this is because of your very active TIF districts. Not, this isn't an alarming percentage and most of the debt service goes out until 2024. So it'll, it, this debt will get paid over a longer period of time. The Internal Service Fund section shows net assets and the change in net assets for the services provided by Village Funds to the general fund. This next slide shows the general fund fund balance over the last five years. You can see there's the net increase that Paul mentioned for 20, 2009 was a little over 111,000, which was a $350,000 increase from last year. And you can see over the five-year period, fund balances have increased just under $700,000. This slide represents the general and debt service fund revenues over the past five years. As you can see, they've, they've trended upwards every year. Not significant increase over 2008 because of the economic conditions, but an increase As I mentioned earlier, the intergovernmental revenues is a large percentage, 60% of the total revenues received, with taxes being the next highest at, at 20, 29%. Here we see general and debt service fund expenditures over the last five years. Of course, these are trending upwards as well. They're not increased as much as, as it could have been without management's foresight with the economic conditions as the, as costs are, tend to go up and debt service increased slightly as well. This is not a steep increase. And public safety and public works are the most heavily funded departments, as you would expect in the city. Here are those allocations of expenditures by department. And you can see debt service is 14, over 14% of expenditures. Moody's likes it to be under 20%, so it's not overly burdensome from year to year. And this is how we discussed earlier, the city has, does have a large amount of debt because, for the TIFs, and it will get paid over a longer period of time so that it is not burdensome, burdensome from year to year. Here is the, the debt capacity, the general obligation debt versus the capacity. You can see trending upwards as the growth goes upwards. The, the growth for 2009 was a positive. It was a small number, but it was still positive. And we've seen other communities where it has trended downwards and gone negative. But it has, it's still at positive for this year. The next section of the presentation talks about the utilities here at Beloit. The first one being the water utility. We do see a decrease in usage, that first line for water sold from 2009 compared to 2008. This is consistent with statewide averages and it's due to the economy and the milder weather we've experienced. Change in net assets is consistent with prior years. If you factor in the transfer in 2008, you can see that as a transfer in for 1.3 million in 2008. If you take that out of the equation, then net assets remain pretty consistent, or the change in them, at least. Last year was a settlement funds transferred from the Capital Projects Fund. The water utility had 3.9 million in new bonds issued in 2009. And down below, some ratios that we like to look at is months of unrestricted cash, with our target being a minimum of three months. And you can see that it's a little over four months. And the percentage of capital assets financed through earnings is 21%. Same information for the sewer utility. We had a decrease in volume treated here. This corresponds with, with the water usage as well as changes in the industrial customer Net assets, if you take out the, net assets increased over the prior year, change in net assets because of capital contributions from the TIF. And you'll see that in the next few slides as well, where the TIF contributed to the utilities. Months of unrestricted cash at 4.6 months, this is strong. The financial forecast will review the projected reserves in the future. Go to the sewer utility. We see that, once again, that the change in that assets compared to the prior year did increase and that was due to contributions from the TIF. The months of unrestricted cash is 5.5, which is a significant increase from the prior year. And the percentage of capital asset financed through earnings is 85%. The transit system, the change in that assets increased over the prior year to the federal funding and local match for capital additions. The month of unrestricted cash is at zero. But this is driven by the timing of construction payments and reimbursements with grant funds and demonstrates the importance of timely grant draws and does reflect a point in time where that can be, that can not, not be misleading, but tell you where you were at that point in time. So if the, if the reimbursements came in right after that, January 1st, you could see where it would be a better number at that point. So the quicker we can get the draws in, the, the higher that level will be. That is, that's the last slide on this presentation. If there aren't any questions or anything from that information, I'll move on briefly to the CAFR.
Any questions? If not, go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. Just real quickly, I want to point out where some information is in the CAFR. On, it's on Roman numeral page nine in the financial section is our opinion on the financial statements. We, our opinion was unqualified for the city, which is the highest level of assurance you can receive from a CPA firm during an audit. And basically, what it basically means is based on our audit and the audit of, the auditors of the Library Foundation, which is included in this report, the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects. Another important piece, important document in the CAFR and the, the best place to go to, to find out what happened during the year and what, you know, we're looking forward out into the future a little out into the future a little bit, is the management's discussion and analysis. This document is created by management. It discusses how the, the city did during the year, a lot of it which we discussed in the presentation. But this does give you some, some good information. It discusses how the financial statements are prepared, its basis of accounting, and then some of the highlights for, for activity during the year. It, it goes into information on, on how the major funds did and some activities in those funds and then outlook on, into the future on any economic, anything known at the, at the time this was prepared that will affect the, the future of the city, mainly your unemployment rates and tax bases and things like that. This report also does discuss capital assets and some major improvements as well as some of the debt activity during the year. So I highly recommend that in your spare time to take it a look and, and you know, and be familiar with it as, as this is a very well-written document. That is, I didn't want to go too much more into the financial statements unless you had information. We've discussed most of it or it is in detail in this report for your review. The third and final document is the report on internal control. We, while we're doing our audit, we look at internal controls to determine our audit tests and procedures. And if we, when we're doing this review, if things come to our, come to us that we show as improvements or, you know, things that the city's operations could be doing better, that we were required to report these in this letter. And this, this letter, you'll see if you were to compare it to last year, it's pretty similar to last year. And a lot of it stems from the size of the finance department and the ability with, under the budgetary constraints of segregating duties in the department. We, you know, we have a somewhat limited staff and they're, you know, they're operating efficiently. Well, sometimes that causes some concerns in internal controls. Now, you guys do a good job of reviewing financial statements, as does, as does Mr. York on the, you know, to make sure that the trial balances that you're presented and the cash disbursements and receipts are, are accurate. So there are good mitigating controls over that, but we're required to report some of these weaknesses. Additionally, in this letter, we have informational points on two-way communications regarding your audit. We're continually planning our audit. And so as for even next year, if there were any concerns you had over audit areas or anything you would direct us to review, we'd love to hear from you. You have, I think you have our contact information now on the presentation and definitely Paul would be able to give that to you as well. If you have any questions, need to talk to us about anything that you feel is of concern, we work for you. We, you know, we, we deal with Paul on a day-to-day basis, but we do work for you. So we'd love your input. And I actually, I did talk to Councilman Vandegard, Bogart, about some of these issues during the audit. That would be something that you would see too, as we do the audit, we'll contact you to talk about your views on the city. There's some other economic conditions in your community. These are similar to the prior years as well because the economy has not improved since last year. So a lot of these comments are for your review and some things to look out on. On page eight, we talk about some departmental controls. Our review was to look at controls that could, for significant class of transactions that could material, places that could materially mistake the financial statements. We just wanted to point out that the city does collect some cash at other locations and those, while not material amounts, they could be important to, just be aware of them and consider those in your internal control structure as well. Finally, we have the required communications with the governing body. It mainly discusses what our responsibilities are under an audit, the planning and timing of the audit, any accounting estimates, disclosures, some audit adjustments that we made, disagreements with management, which happily there were none, and some other representations that management has said to us as a part of this audit. So that's high-level view of the financial statements, this report on internal control. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Councilor DeForest.
I do have some questions about internal controls.
Okay.
The first one is, you recommended that we have a system for review and approval of vendors and the city's response was that we have the vendors complete in an IRSW-9 form. Do you feel in your opinion that's sufficient? Is, is that what other municipalities are doing or would you suggest other alternatives that we should be considering?
Well, that, that is a good approach to make sure that we have them on the system. And if they need a 1099, that's, that's a good start. But I, with this comment is more gearing towards is to review the vendors in the system, make sure that they are, you know, they do tie back to the, to the tax forms and that nothing was added without, just to make sure that, that what we, what we think is in the system is in the system. And to make sure that there's no duplicate vendors or things. And it's not, it's not just for a fraud, but it's just for, you know, errors and, and you know, if we have a lot of vendors, like sometimes there are multiple vendors just because of address changes and things like that, just to clean those up on a periodic basis.
Okay. And then my other question had to do, if I remember correctly, this issue came up in a previous audit about access to the server. I don't know if it was last year or the year before. And our, since then, we've implemented the ID badge and door security system. Do you feel that's efficient? Or I, I thought that would be sufficient in terms of access to the server.
I will, I'd have to check into the details on this one. I apologize for that.
That's right. Okay.
That would seem appropriate. I'm not sure when it was implemented. The implementation of that could affect the comment.
Okay.
So if it was affected during 2009, then it would go away in 2010.
Okay, gotcha. So it just might be a timing issue. All right. That's it, that's all I have for now for major ones. Thank you.
Okay.
Councilor Vandebogart.
Yes, thank you. I had forgotten our conversation, Mr. Lightcap, and I certainly had forgotten the content of our conversation, but, but thank you for referring to it. I guess the one question I had is, is a general one, and I think this has come up year after year. Isn't part of this issue of internal control an issue of the size or lack of size of our community and simply we don't have the bodies to do the cross-checking?
That's definitely where, I tried to convey that in the beginning, that's definitely where these come from, is the size of, of the department. And, you know, if mitigating, if getting rid of these controls meant you had to hire a new person to segregate duties, well, you have to weigh the, the cost and the benefit of that. If you feel that your, your organization is running efficiently and it's, you know, not finding material stamps in the financial statements, you know, then maybe the way you're running your organization is, is good. And that, well, it is good, but you know, it is to the level where you want it to be and that's the decision on the board.
And is this, is that issue generally recognized in your view by the rating agencies and by the other ones that may look at this information? They realize that this is a relatively small operation and, and you can't add layers and layers of checking and cross-checking and rechecking without significant cost issues. And they're not going to ding us for that, are they?
Well, in the, in the 2009 with the, the bonds that were issued, the rating agency, they, they looked very favorably at my management.
Right.
Yeah, if I could just add a comment that the rating agencies normally would not see the report on internal control as part of the rating process. So it's not a document that they, they look at and comment on.
It's not a red flag.
Nope. And the comment that's in your report is similar to 95 percent of the governments that we work with. So you're not unique, you know. In order to get rid of the comment, you'd have to probably hire a full-time CPA on staff that devotes all their time to financial reporting, you know, to keep up with the GASB rules and the things that are changing that would be in addition to everything that Paul and his staff are doing. Now, some good things to note is that the, the city receives the GFRA Certificate of Achievement Award and has done that for a few years as well as the, the budget award. And that, I think, reflects favorably on what staff has been able to accomplish in the past few years. So you're, in terms of what you're able to do with the staff you have, you know, is, is at a pretty high level.
It's because Mr. York doesn't take a lunch ever. You know, so.
Any other questions? Comments? Seeing none?
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is item 11, reports from boards and city officers. 11A, please.
Item 11A is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a commercial offer to purchase a land contract regarding Bushel and Pex.
Mr. Kasper, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. The, the matter before you, as Madam Clerk indicated, would authorize the manager to enter a, a land contract which is attached to, to an additional offer to purchase that we've received from the Bushel and Pex operators. The city entered into a lease agreement approved by council back in March of 2008. Within the terms of that lease agreement, there was an option to purchase the building given to the, the operators of the business. The option that was given, provided for a, a set purchase price of a quarter million dollars, also gave credit for any rent payments that had been made up to the time of the exercise of the option. And it all, it did however contemplate an outright cash transaction. The offer before us is for a land contract. The terms of the land contract are proposed to be at 5 percent interest with payments amortized over 30 years, but made over a period of five years with a balloon on the 60th payment. It also contemplated in August 1, closing fairly shortly here in the future. And, and the actual purchase price that was calculated assumed that the rentals for the month of July would be paid at that time. It gives credit for the July payment. That credit would only be given if the July payment is made. I certainly can try to respond to any questions, but that's basically the essence of the transaction.
Thank you. Is there a motion first of all? Is there a motion to approve this?
Well, yes, I would, to give us something to discuss, Mr. President, I would move approval of 11.
Motion by Vandebogart, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ains. Councilor discussing, Councilor Vandebogart.
All right. My initial thought on, on this, Mr. President, was hesitation and concern. I do not think that as a policy, it is a good thing for the city to get into real estate issues and land contracts. And my initial, perhaps conservatism or hesitancy was, is based on that. However, thinking through the issue, thinking through the facts as I understand them, we, we, the city, will have no new money project. We simply are acting as the financing bank, if you would, for the current operation. The issue to me is one essentially in terms of economic development and support of what's already there. One of the quotes from the audit report that we just received from the auditors, and I'm reading from it, "Now is the time when municipalities should play a pivotal role in strategizing about what development makes the most sense for their community." This is true, both in terms of aligning development projects with long-range comprehensive plans, but more importantly, essential as it relates to targeting public investment in a way that produces catalytic projects with the most opportunity to expand your tax base. I think that the current operators of Bushel and Pex and their location and what they bring to the downtown area have made me change my initial hesitancy or eliminated, rather, my initial hesitancy and my concern of a land contract. So I would be in support of this resolution.
Thank you. Councilor DeForest.
I actually would like to request, after the discussion that we considered laying over this matter, I, I really would appreciate the opportunity to, to speak with some of the downtown businesses to see how they feel about this. I have heard from a few, but I haven't had the chance to talk to a great number of them. And I don't want just a few that I've talked to to color my entire decision on this. The few that I have heard from have, feel that this is an unfair advantage for the owners of this business, that the city is really giving a kind of a golden calf deal here. And I, too, am really uncomfortable with serving as a landlord. I, I don't like the idea of a land contract. And I understand the economic times might force us to be a little creative, but we haven't had good experience serving as a Realtor based on what I know about city councils gone by, that when we've delved into that realm, we've been burned every time. So I, I'm real leery of it. I want more time to study it, think about it, certainly want to talk to the other business owners downtown to see how they feel about it as well.
Thank you. Councilor Nunez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess, before I say this, I guess my question for the staff is, how often have we entered into a land contract agreement with a private company? In the last 30 years?
Want me to answer it? I'm not sure we've ever done a land contract, to my knowledge, that a land contract is not our preferred method of operation. And even though the basic terms and conditions of this deal were included in the original development agreement, when we brought that business into downtown, we would not prefer to do a land contract. However, as we seem to repeatedly or continually have to repeat ourselves, there have been dramatic changes in the national, regional, and local economy in the last two years that have changed the rules of many of these games. And what we're trying to do is respond within the reality of the current economic conditions to do everything we can to keep this business healthy, to keep it viable, and to keep it domiciled in that building in the heart of downtown Beloit. This building sits on the corner of our terminating vista at State and Grand. This business is multifaceted. It, it includes everything from a store that specializes in natural products to a restaurant to, it has entertainment options in the building. And the owners would like to expand and make more improvements and grow the business, but are hesitant to do that without having an ownership interest. Their original plan was to sell a building they own in Chicago and use the proceeds from that sale to purchase this building. That plan did not work because of current real estate market conditions. They were unable to sell the Chicago building. So they've come to the city and asked us if we would consider a land, a land contract under these unusual economic circumstances so we can keep this business in this location and so that they can grow and develop the business, hopefully, and can, and keep it in downtown, keep it successful. That's why this all came about, as the attorney told you. This is a five-year balloon note. Hopefully, the economy would approve enough by then so that they could take down title of the building sometime within that five-year period of time. And if not, they've got to come back to us and renegotiate all the terms and conditions of this deal at the end of the five years.
Thank you. So that'll finish up. So we have not done land contracts in the historically current times. So this is unique that we're going to turn into a financing bank. Those of us that have lived in Beloit for over 30 years knows that they were very well-intentioned, and I'll say that again, they were very well-intentioned. Every single time, or darn near close, when we enter into a commercial real estate deal, taxpayers, so the citizens of the Beloit, of Lloyd, lose out each and every time. We have over a half million dollars invested in this property right now. And though, again, the investment may not have been meant to be recouped, but it still is the taxpayers' money. Though well-intentioned, the taxpayers are going to lose over $300,000. And though I know the economy is tough, everyone in the city knows the economy is tough. Every, every family is, is pained by it. We have already done a great deal to help them. And the reason that we did do that is because we had hoped that they were going to improve property values in the main downtown commercial district. So, but what we're going to do now is we're going to offer them this deal, which we had already entered into the, the dollar amount, and so we're stuck with that. But that is going to potentially reduce the values of other commercial properties downtown. We have done several things for them, three years, I think, that they've been there as part of the deal. I believe that the first year of rent was free. Is that correct?
That is absolutely correct, Counselor. We did a five-year step-up rental agreement with them. We've offered similar terms in other city We've offered similar terms in other situations where our goal was economic development and job creation. The goal here was to take a building that had sat vacant for several years. The city bought the building. We initially bought it for demolition. After my arrival in the community, we worked very hard to save that building because it was a critical part of the streetscape in downtown Beloit. We did not want to create another hole on State Street. We spent a lot of money, over $300,000, remodeling that, the building exterior, cleaning out the building interior. Later, we put a heating and air conditioning system so the building could be occupied. That money was spent as an investment in this community. And you are correct, various taxpayers have paid for that as they've paid for millions of other dollars that this city has invested in completely rebuilding and reinventing this city from the city center out. That includes the Gateway Business Park, it includes the city center, the downtown development, it includes millions of dollars in new infrastructure and park upgrades and improvements that we've invested in our community. And this project is no different than any of the rest of those. And I will tell you something, this city manages about 3,000 acres of real estate, everything from public parks and public facilities to industrial development land to downtown building sites, and we've managed that property and moved the city forward as a result. And I, I'm very, very disheartened to hear that you think every time the city purchases real estate or manages real estate to do things to upgrade this city, that we've been a failure. And I'll guarantee you, if you look around, there's an awful lot of successes out there, and you can start right in downtown, and this is one of them.
And then if I could finish up, please. And again, not directly currently to the current management, I said over the last 30 years, certainly everyone appreciates all of your efforts, and you've done a fantastic job since you've been here, I think. Would have made time, but you never exactly said enough. It's not a personal attack, but it's just something that has just happened so many times. You ask the citizens of Beloit, they'll tell you, you know. Though we were fortunate to have one of our great community leaders help, help us with the mall deal, you know, the mall deal will never leave anyone's mind of problems that we've had. I guess I'd like to just finish up with that, and I'm sorry for taking up so much time. I'm just, I'm wondering, do the current owners pay, do they have, do they pay any property tax on any real estate in the city of Beloit?
Yes, they are. Yes, they pay property tax and personal, real and personal property tax on that building. The building is not tax-exempt simply because it's owned by the city. It's based on the use.
That's right. And do they, do they live in the city of Beloit?
No, no. They've never lived in the city of Beloit. They got active in the downtown area through the farmer's market. They developed an interest and a desire to invest in the city of Beloit. And I will tell you, they've invested as much or more money in that building and that business than the city has.
Thank you. And then just lastly, I'd say, Vandegard, Mr. Counsel Vandegard is right in that we need to try to make investments and get the biggest bang for our buck. And though I wish them the greatest success, and I've tried to shout there several times, I'm not sure that that's where the city is going to get the biggest bang for its buck in the very, very difficult economic times. I think we need to be very conservative and invest in it wisely.
Thank you. Counselor DeForest.
I would just like to make one point. I do disagree with the statement that this is no different than the investment we make in our parks or infrastructure. This does, in some ways, unfairly benefit a private business owner. This is not where we invest in our parks and all the residents benefit. Certainly, our residents do benefit by trying to save our streetscape, and I'm certainly committed to that. However, there is an unfair playing field here for these private business owners, and that's why I feel really strongly that I would request, if the time, to talk with the other business owners in the downtown businesses district to get their, their concerns, their perceptions about this. Maybe I'll hear from them pleasantly that they feel it's such an important anchor that it's worth the investment, and they're okay with the unlevel playing field because of the, you know, the importance of having that anchor there. But I want the time to talk with them, if I could, please.
Thank you. City manager?
I was just going to comment, I'm not sure where this idea came from, that we've suddenly created an unfair advantage or an unlevel playing field. First of all, the price for this building was set two and a half, three years ago when we did the original development agreement with this firm, the lease agreement, to bring this business in and start this business up. This was a startup business from scratch. There was a lot of upfront investment. We negotiated an incentive package to recruit this business, put a lot of time and effort bringing them into the downtown. I can, I can tell you, no other building in downtown has sold for a quarter of a million dollars in the last two years. You want to go around, take a look? You want to go to the Wagner's Building? Make them an offer of $250,000. They won't sell for that. No one will buy the building for that. It's been sitting there vacant, unused for over 10 years, okay? This building, we've been able to put back in use. We've got a viable business in there. They're one of the major anchor businesses in downtown Beloit. And this in no way gives them any kind of an unfair advantage. They're paying the amount of money for this building that they were required to pay three years ago when this deal was initially structured and put together. It's more money than anyone else has paid, and it reflects no discount because of real estate market conditions over the last two years, which have dropped property values all over the United States. So they're not asking for anything special here. The only thing different from this and the deal that was included in the original contract is we have to do the land contract because they could not sell their building in Chicago, so they don't have the money to buy the building outright at this time. That's the only thing that changes here.
Okay, thank you. Counselor DeForest, you said you wish that we had laid this item over. Is that, you want to put that in a formal motion, please?
Yes, I'd like to put that, lay over item 11A.
Is there, is there a second?
Second.
Motion by DeForest, seconded by Nunez. Any counsel questions? I do have one. City manager, are there, is this a time-sensitive issue?
Well, the owners were, obviously, would like to move forward as quickly as they can. They've developed some plans, as I indicated earlier, to make improvements to the building, expand the business. Also, as Counselor Nunez explained earlier, this rent was a step-up. The first year, there was no rent. The second year, it went up to something like $1,250 or so a month. This year, it went up to $2,500 a month. And so the increases have been steep, and the business, according to the owners, has done okay, and they're meeting their projections, but they have not been able to grow the business to the extent that they can absorb those additional rental payments at that level. That was one of the reasons also they wanted to go ahead and do the sale, as you saw in the sales contract that cuts their monthly payment down to a more manageable number and make sure the business can remain viable. So if you're going to, if you're going to delay it, I would ask that you not delay it very long. We need to address this at some point.
Would it be safe to say we can lay it over to our next meeting?
It's up to council, certainly.
I know that, but I'm just saying, if it's a time, that's why I asked if it was a time-sensitive issue, because we have acted on things as time-sensitive, and I, I get that. I understand that we want to do some research and stuff, but however, in the past, we've asked the question, is it a time-sensitive issue, and then we've taken action at that particular time. So I fully understand that it's our responsibility or our call, but I want to be, make sure that we're being fair to everyone. So once again, I would ask the question, is it's okay to lay over to our next meeting?
Well, it, it certainly is, if that's council's wishes to hold this over. We will have to work with, with property owners, explain that there's been a delay, and if that's council's wishes to go ahead and hold, hold it over, that's only two weeks. I, you know, it's hard for me to say that that's going to be any kind of a deal killer if it, if it's held for two more weeks.
Counsel Vandegard.
I don't know the, the outcome, obviously, of the pending vote, but if, if the motion to lay it over does pass, I hope that in the discussions that we have with the individuals that are concerned, we, we phrase the question honestly, will you be better off if there's a vacancy in that building? I understand you may not like what's occurred, but are you going to be better off or worse off if there's a vacancy there?
Good question. Counselor Nunez, and then we're going to call the vote.
Yes, thank you. I agree with Counsel Vandegard. We should be honest, and we certainly should use that as one of the criteria, but there's much more to it than that. The real estate deal is relevant. It is their tax money, it is their city, and they should know about that. They should know how it's, it could potentially impact their property values. That was the reason many of us were rooting to come to downtown, was that there was going to be a potential for an investment that would have a return on it, not a tremendous loss.
Thank you. At this time, there is a motion on the floor to lay this item over into our next meeting. All those in favor of saying, of laying this over, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Passes five to two with Counsel Haynes and Counsel Vandegard voting nay. Item 12, there's a motion to adjourn. Motion by Johns, is there a second? Second by Dent. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you.
It's okay if you started a lunch. It's okay. You can start your lunch.